Yes, sir, we have a question.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the day and all the many blessings you've given us, Father. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to pray for all the people in the world that are going to be saved. Well, at night, I just pray that you would give it on their meeting, Father. I just pray that anything said, all these things asking Jesus.
Thanks for recognizing any elected officials who may be present. Thanks for recognizing any veterans we may have. I'd have one of our county. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh, next, we're recognizing the law for the presidency. Last, we recognize any county departments. This is before his first, it's a motion to adopt the proposed. All we've all have received. Next item on, the first item on the agenda is. All we've considered. Five listed there at this time. Bottom of the regular agenda, out of parcel eight two seven, this time.
Planning would like to share with you a minimum housing case from a petition that we have received. Properties at one eighteen Victoria Road, and what we're requesting tonight is authorization from this board to proceed with abating the property, being cleaning up the home on the property or moving the home and cleaning up the debris property. And this all follows our ordinance, section three point five, article three of the Cleveland County Code. And that section pertains to minimal housing and just a little bit about minimal housing. I know it's been a couple of years since I brought one of these cases to you, but the the purpose of this ordinance is to provide some tools that helps provide safe living conditions for our residents. Um, and it also helps eliminate blight and unsafe housing from neighborhoods and really just overall improves the quality of life throughout a neighborhood. The property I have for you tonight at Victoria Road, you can see I've got it outlined. Um, it's a half acre tract of land located within a neighborhood. Um, and this neighborhood is off of Cherrville Highway, Highway one fifty between the Waco and Shelby area. And here you can see a picture of the home. Um, it has sustained substantial burn damage. Uh, and we're looking at a total replacement of this home in in order to repair it. Um, the value of the home on the tax records currently is about two thousand dollars, so the the cost of repair far exceeds the value of the home. And and I say that calculation to you because our ordinance describes situations when the the repair costs exceed the value that that authorizes this board to allow staff to just remove the the home from the property. Um, the next slide, what you've got here is a timeline. I, and what you see is a lot of dates. And my goal with this slide was really to show compliance. I wanted to show compliance with notification that our ordinance requires. Our ordinance requires us notify the property owner and post signs. Um, and you can see through these dates that we've done that. We've notified for the public or for the hearing with the property owner. We've held the hearing, um, we've delivered by mail, certified mail, the uh, um, ordinances, uh, the order requiring removal of the home to the property owners. So so staff has met our obligation per ordinance. And I will point out the last three items on this slide, um, where we mailed the orders by, um, restricted delivery and posted a sign. Those are not required by our ordinance, but our staff took another step. You know, trying to make sure we're we're doing our due diligence and and connecting with these property owners. And the next slide, I'll show you, here's a a picture of the the sign that we've posted on the property, and this is basically a copy of the order that was mailed. And then you can see the home in the background. Um, one of the heirs, this property has two heirs, the owners passed, there's two heirs, one of them lives in Lincolnon, we have restricted delivery certified from the post office that it was completed to that property owner in Lincolnon. Um, the other property owner lives across the street. We do not have certification that they've signed for the uh, the letter. However, we did post a sign or the we act, the actual letter, we posted on the the property across the street from their home. Um, that's all I've got for this one. Um, with these cases, you've got some options. You can approve authorizing staff to remove the home and clean the property. You could deny the ordinance, um, and then you could also allow more time to the property owners. And I will state, I don't, I didn't state this clearly, but I will state with this one, we have not had contact from the property owners. They have not made an effort to reach out to our office.
Thank you, Chris. Hang tight. Does anybody have, does anybody on the board have questions for Chris?
Just one, will you go back to when you first started? Uh, I just want to see how what period of time, so you started in January.
We started in January, we did.
Any other questions? All right, can you go back to the? Any discussion amongst the board? So here now, is there a, is there a question? For one of the three items on the slide.
I'll make a motion if you go ahead and approve the ordinance.
And I will second that. I think you did it as much as you could to try to get in contact with.
There's a, uh, there's a small RV beside it now, so I'm assuming somebody is living on the property and the sign's right there, so. And they haven't contacted us at all, so I don't see any alternative.
And that looks like it could be a very, uh, real tricky value, didn't it?
We actually pulled into the driveway and there was someone walking around a storage building next to the home, and I I tried to speak to them and ask them who owned it, and they, I got a point to a house across the street, but of course, we knew that was one of the heirs.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? All right, if not, uh, all those persons say aye. If they opposed. All right, folks, carries, you guys have the direction.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, guys. All right, next is, uh, public hearings. We have one tonight, I believe, so at this time, by the way.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
Thank you. We have one item tonight. This is Latimore Volunteer Fire District conclusion, so this is essentially brought along to Latimore Fire District, get to the County White Fire Service District. This time I recognize Perry Davis to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come before me tonight. Uh, I'll be very brief. Um, some of you are familiar with the action that we're taking, um, tonight in regards to inclusion of.
Hit the down one. Hit the down one.
Okay. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on this, their fire district was originally created under General Statute sixty-nine. Um, and I mean, depending on the fire tax that's generated just within the boundaries of that district. Um, since that creation, uh, times have changed, annexation has taken place. And it's basically, uh, gobbled up a major portion of their revenue sources within that district, and it's caused a reduction in their revenue. Um, the current funding model, uh, will not allow them to sustain operations as they have in the past. Um, so they they solved another method of funding, which is actually the Cleveland County Service Tax District. And, uh, the Latimore Fire Board of Directors has met and expressed this desire and has approached the Board of Commissioners, um, to have this action taken tonight. Um, many years ago, the service district was created. I don't have a specific date. I went back trying to find that, but I can't put my finger on it. But it was sometime in the seventies or so. Um, so it was created under General Statute one fifty-three eight, uh, and it does provide a sustainable funding model. Um, currently, there are ten fire departments within that service district. And, uh, this will allow Latimore to add a paid staffing, um, to their department they don't currently have access to, uh, because of the, uh, the amount of funding they were received by joining the service district. Um, the process, the municipalities are required that are served by this fire district to adopt a resolution that supports the change. Um, you should have copies of those resolutions within your packets. Um, those are the town of Latimore, the town of Kingston, uh, the town of Mooresboro, and these were all completed June the ninth. Um, all the same night, as a matter of fact. And the Board of, Board of Commissioners, um, basically have to have a public hearing, which is taking place tonight. And, uh, and vote a resolution to include Latimore into the service district if you choose, so. Um, also, in addition to that, the North Carolina General Statute sixty-nine dash twenty-five point eleven requires you all, as a board, to approve the fire district boundaries within your county. Um, so we do have to hold that public hearing, as I said, which are taking place now. And then your actions will be to approve or deny the addition of Latimore to the service district and signing the resolution if you choose to approve that. And I'll take any questions at your time.
Thank you, Perry.
That question was no good before. They did not pay the fire tax. They had their own tax structure in the fire district, right?
So all, all of them did pay the fire tax. Um, it was just the way that the taxes give you the, did not go to any other department. It was all collected within their fire district and stayed within their department.
Okay, so all of, all of them had the same.
Yes, sir, that's correct. All, all tax rates are the same countywide.
Any other questions before we hold the vote here? All right, so at this time, uh, if you think of anything else we can do with the end, okay, go. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open, and we did have one person to sign up, Mr. Beal.
I'm sorry, this speech won't be as exciting as recent ones you've heard, so. My name is Alton Beal. I live at one oh four North Lee Street in Latimore, and I'm the mayor of the town and serve as the chairman of the board of the number seven fire department. Uh, tonight I've come to express my appreciation to the board for considering, uh, the admittance of our fire department into the service district. Uh, the dynamics of the funding of our department have changed drastically over the last twenty years. When PPG was annexed by the city of Shelby years ago to preserve those jobs, it started a cycle that has just adversely affected our income as a department. One by one, factories and businesses that helped fund our department through the tax base were absorbed by the city of Shelby. And so as a result, that money that once flowed into our districts disappeared. And so the opportunity for number seven to join the service district will be a great, great help to our community. Uh, it'll enable the department to have more staffing, uh, throughout the week, and ultimately, it's going to result in better response times and service for those on the western side of the county. Uh, fire departments all over the country are grappling with a higher cost of equipment, a decrease in volunteerism, and funding limitations. And so I hope tonight that the board will approve this resolution to help number seven overcome, uh, some of these challenges and to invest in the safety and the protection of those in our district. Uh, in the past, the commissioners have shown wisdom and discernment and how they steward the resources available to first responders, emergency personnel, and fire departments, and this resolution is just another step uh, in that journey. And the towns of Kingtown, Kingstown, Mooresboro, and Latimore believe it's a win, and we hope that you do too. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, as I said, we only had one to sign up, so now I'll declare the vote here closed. And it's back to the board for questions and discussion and deliberation. What questions do you guys have?
I don't have any questions, but I will make a motion if you're ready.
Just make sure nobody else has any comments.
I was just gonna ask, uh, uh, all of the fire departments that are within the service district, they have certain rules and regulations they have to abide by, staffing, et cetera. And, uh, they they would just fall right in and do the same.
That's correct. I'll, I'll speak for that. So they're required, each department within the service district are, with their contract with the county, is required to staff a minimum of twenty hours per day.
And this is just a win-win for the citizens because they would have much better.
Should cut response time down by having somebody in the.
Yep.
Uh, near a fire truck during the day.
Uh, the only other way, there's increase the tax for their district, this way to keep the taxes. Increase the funding for this district and keep the tax the same as everybody else, tax rate the same as everybody else.
Again, a win-win.
It is. So, yeah, Johnny.
I second.
So we have a motion to second. Is any last minute discussion? If not, all those persons say aye. Uh, anybody opposed? All right, congratulations, welcome. Next item on the agenda is we have one boardwoman, and I'll run for this, the Fire Relief Fund Board of Member two, I will run for much, this one is much like the one that we just did, uh, a week or so, a month, a meeting or two back, uh, involvement to Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department, suppose.
Yes, sir. Just like the chairman said, this one is for the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund. Uh, just like the one we did a couple of meetings ago, they have had a passing of a member. Uh, so they have vetted and are requesting, uh, for this board to appoint Tommy Parsley to, uh, fill Moffett Sizem's term.
He did a motion. I'll, I'll make the motion, we approve this.
Any discussion or questions? Right here now, all three will say aye.
Ah.
Anybody opposed? So we, last item tonight, we have a closed session, so let me read this, and then we'll need a motion in a second to enter closed session, closed session. Uh, per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, this time it'd be under section A one, to prevent the disclosure of information as per whose competence pursuant to the law of this state or the United States are not considered a public record within the meaning of one thirty-two A of the general statutes. With that, I undertake a motion to enter closed session.
Seven.
We're set. A motion second, all three will say aye. Ah, anyone opposed? All right, behind the board, we're in closed session. The world reconvened in the boardroom.
All right, uh, let the record show we're back in open session. And, uh, during the closed session we heard county's behalf. Without interrater motion to... Any commissioners have anything they'd like to say? If it's not, uh, the next meeting is July eighth.
Yes, sir.
I guess I should refer to my folks. Yeah, so the county commissioners will meet next on July eighth, uh, six p.m. here in the Commissioners' chamber. Without interrater motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third. All right, all three of us say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.